I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Secretaries, the roll call, please. Thank you. Proof of public notice. Is that provided?
Yes, we have published the agenda on the district website at both of our buildings, elementary school and the middle school and high school. It was provided to the public library and Kewaunee Star.
Wonderful. All right, thank you. All right, the next, I would entertain an approval of the agenda as presented.
So move.
Entertain them.
Second.
All right. Moved by Jeremy, seconded by Lonnie. All those in favor of approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Before we do the approval of the consent agenda, is there anything that anyone wanted pulled out to discuss later?
No.
If not, then I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved, Chrissy.
Move. Moved by Chrissy, seconded by Shannon. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, in our consent agenda, we did have the approval of a donation for the Algoma FFA alumni, which donated $2,025 to our newly reestablished Algoma FFA chapter. So that's a wonderful, wonderful thing for them to do for us. So thank you. That was acknowledgement of our donations. All right, board recognition. The school board would like to recognize the high school students that initiated the period project. So welcome.
Hi.
Hi, what could you tell us a little bit about your project?
Okay, so we're a group of students that started the initiative within the high school that provides superior products to all students. We wanted, or we started this initiative because we saw how superior property was affecting students within our school and our education.
Many of the students that experience administration cycle often struggle with getting the needed products. And if they are unable to access the products, it could hold them back from things that they enjoy doing, like school and sports, and they could be missing out on stuff because of it.
Additionally, if someone realizes they've got their period and they don't have any products, this time spent trying to find them can lead to missing class time and other important instructions, which can be bad for their academics while being.
Last year, we worked with periods at elementary school and we set up a system where we added cards to their classrooms.
We also added tote home bags in all the bathrooms to provide more products for those students to take home.
And then we have candy bins at the end of each hallway for our learning cans and you collect them and it helps with other stuff that we do in the past.
Interesting. Any questions?
I'll say my daughter started first day of seventh grade and she didn't have nothing. So this was very, very welcome and appreciated.
How long has this been going on?
Well, we, me and Tessa were first, like in our group to carry on the initiative. It was first ran by Izzy, Denise and Megan Stoller.
Okay.
They started it, it would have been our freshman year, we're seniors now. So it's been a total of four years.
Do any of the girls come back and say, well, they might not know who you are, but do you see a lot of the girls just being appreciative and the products being gone and?
Yeah, yeah, we take inventory on like what is used each week. So each week we check how many is used and then we add more. So we have like a way of seeing what is used.
Wonderful, wonderful. I think it's great. It's a great initiative. Women taking care of women, I think is what we need to do. We need to support each other, not tear each other down. So this is wonderful.
Do you accept donations or do you do special drives above and beyond the can recycling?
Yeah, we do donations. We have a bin in the wall so that anyone can use it.
How do you make a donation? Do you go through the school or does it go to you directly or how does that work?
You bring it to the office or the wall so that.
You can also talk about your fundraiser that you give to the kind of older mom.
Oh yeah, so we do, we call it pie of teachers. So each teacher gets a jar with their face on it if they want to do it. And they, students can put as much money as they want into, into the jars. And then whoever has the most jars gets like, I mean scoops of whipped cream and then student that puts their name into it, they need to come up and try it with the paste. So it gets like all the kids involved. Yeah.
Jesse, did you get that? What do you got to put in the jar?
Uh, change, money.
Oh, change?
Yeah.
Do you have one?
Uh, they won't do it till probably winter.
Yeah.
Let me know when you're there though.
Yeah, we need, we need to know that. That's amazing.
Well, one of you or Ms. Perulero will talk about what, how this all started and what Beta is. Cause I think that's really important too.
So Beta is a space I started eight years ago now. During the time, they had kind of this influx of students, very much like these students who said, you know, we have changes we want to make. And so they kind of were starting in pockets to make that change. And then they said, you know, well, they kind of need a space and time to be able to do that. And so Beta was created. It's a space where they get the skills they need. So how do you work with stakeholders? How do you see where your assets are? And just like work together. And it's been going for eight years now. We really build, try to build their self-awareness. And then they just take out initiatives and I'm just there to guide them along the way. But really they take the lead and they have a couple really excited about, two sophomores that joined us this year that will take over when the senior girls graduate in spring. So our hope is that, you know, it just continues. Kara joined us this year. She's looking at creating a mentor program. And we have another student, Sean, who joined and he's working on a geo caching project to kind of pinpoint certain spots in Algoma, in the town for people to be able to be drawn to. So just they come with ideas and we set them up and they get to kind of put it into action. So we call them youth change agents. It's the title of the group.
That's great for a resume. That's great for school. That's a fantastic thing to have.
Now, with some of these great ideas, have you guys thought of going to places like Enomie Galavine? Typically has a table that they will set up with information and stuff for like a month for people. Typically it's businesses, but that might be an option to get the word out a little bit more, get some donations, stuff like that. Galavine's pretty, pretty good. I think Mark Kunkel would be a good one to talk to. He's typically in Tuesdays and Thursdays. Or any of the girls there would help too.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, now comes the fun stuff. We've got certificates for you because this is a great accomplishment and you get our photo taken with us. The board.
How exciting.
Yes.
Make sure to pronounce their names so we know all, who all these girls are.
Lucy Zimmerman the first.
There you go, Miss.
If you want to just stay over here on the board, that's where we're going to have you. All right, Tessa.
I don't want to be in the back.
John, Miss.
Thank you.
I'll stab her, Chrissy.
There you go. Mackenzie Stewart. I said it right. Right. Louts. I wasn't sure. Not my head. I'll get it right. All right.
All right. Everyone get ready. The resume needs to be standing. Come on back. Thank you, ladies, for coming, as I know it's hard to do presentations, but we really appreciate it.
Oh, glasses off my head.
One, two, three.
You are all doing great work. We really appreciate it. Keep it up.
Thanks for spending your Monday night with us too.
You can stay.
Have a good night.
All right. So now we do our reports and then we have the student report. I thought it was the other way around. Okay. You gotta listen to our reports, sorry about that. Okay.
We can twitch it around for next month if you want to.
Yeah. Well, we'll see. If she goes really well, we might just keep her. All right. So, board correspondent report by me. Not much going on. There were two federal grants designated to support special ed teachers and the deaf, blind students that were canceled specifically for Wisconsin. The DPI received notice that the federal government was ending these projects at the end of the current budget period. And the US Department of Education stated the two programs reflect the prior administration's priorities and policies, preferences and conflict, and conflict with those of the current administration, which is unfortunate because some of that money went for training new special education teachers. And there's, there's just such a shortage of sped teachers. So I'm hoping that that can change. Also, the Assembly, Republicans and Democrats proposed a series of contrasting education bills. What's significant about this is even though there isn't much going on in the sessions right now, it's kind of laying the groundwork for their education programs for the 2026 cycle. So the Republican caucus proposals are going to center around changes to the math curriculum and testing. Incentive for school consolidation and shared services. That's an interesting one. And the teacher bill of rights, which is going to focus on student discipline. The Democrats announced their own proposals and they're focused on increasing general school aids equal to the inflationary increases. WASB has a wonderful thing on that that's actually a good three to 4,000 gap between what's gone with inflation and what's gone with school aid. Providing healthy school meals for every student at no cost and creating a line on the tax bill for private choice and independent charter school funding. So you would see exactly how much of your tax dollars went to fund those schools. And then the last bill that we had hoped that could possibly help us was Assembly Bill 196. That would allow the Wisconsin retirement sys, retirement system retirees to return to work without having to suspend their annuity. The bill was pulled from the Kit Committee's agenda. The Republicans are saying that there's going to be pushback from others in the GOP caucus, which again is unfortunate because law enforcement and firefighters, as well as jailers and protective occupations had it passed for them. So they can retire and come back and still get their annuity. But for teachers, there's still a roadblock. So those are the updates coming this month. It's going to slow down a little bit more, but there's always going to be something going on. So that is my report. Next up is the Board CISA report by Treasurer Chrissy.
Yeah, so we met last week. I don't know if you saw the news, CISA VII was awarded the Green Bay area public school superintendent search. So they beat out WASB to do the recruiting and search for that. So that's exciting with our new leadership, great way to engage with the Green Bay area school district. The big part of our meeting is that we reviewed and approved the agency administrator evaluation tools. So if we ever want to take a look at that while we're doing Jessie's evaluation, they are evaluating on relationships, management, leadership and personal qualities. And there's only four options to choose from, exceeding, effective, developing or not meeting. There's no middle ground, which is one of my favorite things. If you do a scale of one to five, there's sometimes a lot of threes in there. We reviewed and approved the use of agency facilities form and policy. So I don't know if it would overcome to this, but if we need a space in Green Bay for a meeting, they rent out their conference rooms. So, and they are very reasonably priced. We also did a second reading of 11 Head Start policies. And then we did a workshop with Patty Vicman from WASB, understanding each other's strengths and uncomfortable areas.
She's in Door County, isn't she?
Of course, yeah.
Yep. I remember her. I met her. Any questions for either Chrissy or myself? All right, now we get to move on to the board cor, or we move on to the student representative report. Welcome to your first meeting. Hi.
My name is Kara Krieger. So we'll start off this fourth, you guys, I'm a sports person. So I have what we've won and what we've lost and that's, that's about all I know. But for soccer, we won our most recent games on Monday and Thursday. Volleyball also won on Thursday, but football didn't lose their game on Friday. But overall soccer's been doing pretty good this season, at least. At the LA stands for Future Business Leaders of America. And they just recently had a fundraiser at Hoover's where I think they just helped like bring food out to cars and stuff to raise money for the admissions fee for At the LA. The homecoming theme this year is going to be music genres. And Kewaunee B is a very talented student who will be designing like the T-shirt logo for us this year. And then for middle school, we have heard, there's been a lot of positive feedback about the like separate schedule for the middle schoolers, especially from the high school. And then there's also been Mrs. Schmidt and her aide Caitlin, as well as Mr. Robertson and Avery have been doing middle school like advisory sessions Monday through Thursday. So that's like 15 minutes where they go in and they like give a little lesson to the middle schoolers, which is supposed to help build like a better community within our middle school. And I think that's been really positive. And then, yeah, that's, that's all I have.
I have two questions. Music genres is going to be the theme for, how is that? I'm confused how that could be a theme for homecoming.
So like, I do have like what the genres for each grade is.
Oh, each grade's going to be one, okay.
The seniors' music genre would be rap. So we're going to try to decorate the hallway in a way that would like encompass like how you would envision rap music.
Okay. I get it now. So it's more for the spirit week, not necessarily for the dance. That's where I was getting confused. Okay, and lyrics will be clean?
I hope so.
Then the second one, what is the separate schedule for the middle school? Can you explain how that, how you being an upperclassman, how, do you see that as a plus or a minus?
So from what I'm aware, it's just like five minutes off from our original schedule, which means when us high schoolers are in the hallways, we don't really see the middle school as much as we would. From what I've heard from some of my friends, specifically my taller friends, is we are running into a lot less children because we're, we're, no, we can see them because they're usually a little bit taller at this point. But also I think it just gets a little chaotic. The middle school are coming up from elementary school. So there's like an adjustment period there where they're going to be a little bit more rowdy and a little bit more obnoxious and a little bit more chaotic. And so as upperclassmen who have kind of mellowed out, we don't have to deal with that as much.
So do you think however, if you're not dealing with that, those middle schoolers are not necessarily seeing the role models in the older students?
I think, at least I believe that's probably why they implemented the advisory sessions. I also think what could be beneficial, and I talked to Courtney about this, is having some of the upperclassmen, like the juniors and seniors, also being a part of those advisory sessions. Because then they are being interacted with the upperclassmen and they're seeing how like, they're hearing it from people that they're able to look up to versus just an adult. And I think that does make an impact.
I agree.
What are your goals as student council president this year?
I don't know.
Okay, well.
Figure that out.
Well, it's a, it's a big, it's a big responsibility. Didn't know if you had anything like, here's what I want to do.
School just started. You got time.
Any other questions for Ms. Krieger? Well, thank you and welcome. You're welcome to stay. You don't have to leave yet. You can see what it is we do.
Seems pretty boring to me. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, you guys.
Yes, you too. Alrighty. Anyone here for public comment? Okay, then I will go on to the board president announcements. All right, we got Karen. So when you said that about Jessie's evaluation, we will have to sit and meet and kind of come up as to how we want to do that. There were two opportunities. I would like to go online, we'll see what we can do on that. Anyone have any concerns? We think that might be viable to try this year. And we just have to decide where, what we want to use, CISA VII or WASB. So maybe we could have that discussion now. I don't like doing it in front of Jessie, but we need to have that discussion. It's coming up. We don't have to do it now, but we should just start thinking about it and aligning. Is there a way we can get a paper copy of what CISA VII, so we can see if we would like their questions? I'll see if we can get one from WASB because I think that might help us drive how we want to go. You two haven't seen it, but it's kind of, it can be a little stuffy and starchy and not really get us to what it is that we want to get to. So I think if we see the right questions and we have a good combination, I think we can provide better feedback.
And how often do we do this?
Once a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's usually.
Did you say that CISA VII wanted to have just four questions, no middle?
Four answers. So you're either exceeding, meeting, barely meeting and then not meeting. So, yeah.
There is a fee, I think with CISA VII. I don't know if there is with WASB, not, because they compile everything then and kick it back. So, I mean, that's something we'll just look at, but I want to put it on everyone's radar. It's not for a while, but just keep it ahead, keep it on your schedule. Same thing with something else, and that is strategic planning and setting priorities for this, for the district. It's a little late to do it now, we realize. Summer kind of got away from us, but we would like to get started in doing that. Coming together as a board, staying either two hours later after a board meeting or coming in early prior to a board meeting and having the discussion. So there's different ways we can go. Does anybody have any input of how we should move forward on a strategic plan for the district? Do you want to sit and mull it over a little bit? Otherwise, I could give homework, which would be, they kind of come up with, what are three priorities you want to see the district moving towards? And again, it wouldn't be implemented this year, it would, because it's going to take some time.
Yeah, I wonder if we don't, you know, on our own, come up with three ideas and then bring it together as a group and then kind of hash them out.
Yeah.
Cause I'm sure some of us are going to have the same ideas, but then, you know, preferably for the meeting, I would prefer, but I'm sure most, everybody would prefer after.
That would be, that would, that's a great idea. And I think parental input with you guys that, that have kids currently in the district is huge. We also want to involve the administrative team. So it would be kind of a collaborative administration, school board coming up with the plan and then moving forward with it. The reason I, I chose three is I don't want to have a laundry list and then we lose sight of what our priorities are and we aren't moving towards that because we need to gauge ourselves with something. And so if we kept it and maybe we collaboratively come up with a fourth or a fifth. But that's where I was, why I chose three, is for us to kind of pick and choose how we want to do it. So again, very early, but we'd like to have it concluded by early 2026. So that we can start, you tack other things on to a strategic plan in your focus after that. So if you could think about it, come with some priorities. You can email me. No, you can't. How can we collect the data? We can just talk about it now. We could just bring it up for the next board meeting and we could just spend some time discussing it out in public unless you feel better. But I think that would be the best thing is.
Before or after a meeting, I mean, I don't think that needs to go into a meeting, right? I mean.
Probably best to schedule it as like a work session.
A work session.
Right.
That's not a school board meeting.
But it's not, it's, it could be, you know, letting them know exactly what we're thinking and giving them.
Correct, but that's a work session. That's not a.
True. I didn't intend to have this be the work session.
That's going to get a little bit out of hand. It's, that's not the function of a, a board meeting. That's, that's a separate meeting.
But we can have a discussion on it now though, but that's where I was coming from.
This is the discussion. I think it needs to be had in a separate, like you said, a work session or a committee meeting or whatever you want to have. But it, I mean, and then you bring it forward to add a board meeting. But it doesn't need to be in a board meeting. So.
If we're looking at involving the admin team, I think it would be easier to schedule it if it was before the board meetings rather than after.
Okay.
So, but that doesn't always work through work schedules.
But what we could do is.
The next meeting is the day they don't have school. It's an in-service day.
Is this something we're going to want?
Staffer here though.
Yes, staffer. But parents may be taking their children up.
I was going to say, is this something we want some input from parents?
No, because it's our, it's our focus. It's the board's focus on our strategic planning and what we want to see done. Hopefully guiding the district.
Then I guess my question is, I'm not saying that you don't want admin input, but if this is ours, then.
That's why we're having the discussion, that whatever you think. You're right.
If it's our vision, then why are you having admin input at this point, I guess? If it's our vision.
I don't think it should entirely be our vision.
But you need to have both their input too. But what I'm saying is you need to have yours and then get theirs also with that.
Exactly, that, that's how.
You need to start with one and move down to.
Well, if you brought ideas in and then we hashed out completely, we've got a good six months.
Until you get to a certain point sometimes, so.
Strategic planning is a long, hard process where you have a lot of wordsmithing.
Twenty twenty-six is also around the corner, so don't forget that part.
Right. That's why if we parse it out.
Are you talking the calendar, twenty-six or for school?
Calendar.
So ideally you probably want this document somewhat completed before the April election.
Yeah.
That's what I mean.
What we're leaning towards.
I do think at some point maybe having input from parents might be a good idea. Just because there, a lot of them, I think, and I shouldn't even say a lot, but I've heard a number of people that feel like, and I don't want to say out of the loop, but like, as a parent, you said your kid there, but you really don't have a whole lot of say in direction and things like that. That's why I ran, was because I felt like, you know, I was one of those parents. At, I'm not saying in the beginning, because I do agree in the beginning it needs to be just the school board coming up with some, but we all hear things. We all hear parents talk. Maybe that can have a factor in some of our own personal ideas.
Could be. Either way, I'm hearing a consensus that this is something we want to do. Now, we can work on getting the meat and bones back to you guys. Keep noodling around in your head, priorities and where you want to see us next year, three years, five years, 10 years. I mean, each board could possibly do it their own, but it would be nice to have a little focus and start gearing up towards something. So that was, it's just something to start thinking about. We're going to start planning and we'll start doing some work. We're not going to, we're not setting anything in stone tonight. Just wanted to see if it was something everyone would be willing to commit to. And it sounds like everyone is willing to commit to it, so we will move it forward.
If you're planning on having this done relatively soon, I think we should figure out if we're having a work meeting and when it's going to be. Otherwise, we're going to come to the next meeting and go, everybody think of that? Yep. Okay, now when do we want to have a work meeting? Now we're two months old.
Yeah.
So I, I would suggest that we set a meeting now.
Okay.
Start the initial conversations, bring the ideas forward. Then we can, once we've got our ideas, we can approach the district or whoever, admin staff and say, this is what we would like to see. Are you in agreement? Do you have additions? Do you want, whatever. And then, okay, now we've got the board and admin staff, now we can approach group of parents and say, this is what we'd like to accomplish. Do you agree with that? Is that, is there something else you would like to see?
That sounds good to me. I wasn't sure if we were willing to push that quick so soon, so that's why I wanted to. I was willing to, I was willing to wait a month, but if you want to start it, let's go.
Yeah, I think, I think having the conversation sooner than later. I understand the idea of a strategic, strategic plan and having goals for the board, but if we're expecting the admin to fulfill those goals, right? Are they goals for us? Or are they goals for the overall school and who's all involved in making sure that those goals get met, right? That, that's a huge question.
I think it's goals of the overall school is what we're really looking for.
The whole district.
We're not looking for s- goals of the board or goals of the admin or looking for goals of the overall school.
Right, we would need input from administration.
That's a separate discussion. Yeah.
Maybe even teachers, for that matter, to say, hey, these are some of the things that we would like to see moved forward. They know better than we do. You've got your admin representatives who are speaking on behalf of the teachers.
Mm-hmm.
So you can, we can give them our, our thoughts. They can collectively gather theirs and bring them to us and. But if we set a work meeting for two, three weeks from now, is that something we can send out to your staff to say, we'd like to accumulate this information?
So let me just take a step back here. I think one of the pieces that we need to focus on is what kind of data does the board want to look at to get a true picture of, of what it is you want to focus on? So what would be helpful for me and our admin team would be, what kind of data can we put together ahead of time to present to you guys that you would like to see?
We need to step back, just a, a hair.
Yes. So, do you want to see?
Do you want, do you want time to noodle that over?
Yeah.
To think about that.
I, for one, would like to see the last strategic plan and were those goals met? That's what I would like to see. You know, when's the last time a strategic plan was put together by the school? Was it two years ago, three years ago? I'm going to turn to Katie, she's here.
That would have been probably when we were working on the board goals, which are similar to the ones we have now. But I would say we haven't met and done any kind of data dig or anything like that in a few years. So initially, we started, um, kind of developing what you're talking about. We kind of put together a strategic plan and helped build a whole idea. Um, but that was quite a few years ago now. Um, and then we kind of fine tuned that into the board goals. And those have, those five board goals have seemed to like slowly be revised year after year.
So ten years?
Um, I'd say five.
Oh, okay.
Probably five to seven, probably like seven years since we did the big whole idea.
I would say twenty one, right after.
Yeah. Yeah.
Came back from COVID.
And I probably have all of those goals, documents, tailor some flow charts and, um, really tried to dig down into those different board goal areas. So I probably posted that together with you, Jessie.
So is that even a four-year time then?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
So everybody is immune.
Correct. Yes. That's why we, we thought it was time to kind of revise, simplify them. They don't need to be as long and as wordy. To the point, let's get to it so that we all can recite it. I couldn't tell you what all of the vision, you know, all the goals are. So that's where I was coming with this.
Well, Jeremy, we should probably see what the old goals were.
Some of it's on the website currently. So it's there.
Yeah, and for me, the other piece would be enrollment data for maybe the last, you know, ten years. And where, where is our district setting enrollment? I know we're declining, but we're also seeing increases in the ABA enrollment, open enrollment. So that could tie into any goals that we set, set forward on our strategic planning is, honestly, compared to the trends of enrollment in this district. Jessie, is that something you can email us, this previous plan and enrollment that we won't have to try to find it on?
I have it up to Wednesday morning.
Well, I know Wise Dash has a bunch of information because I would like the test scores for math and reading, our participation, our graduation rate, um, the incident referrals and a breakdown by the grade levels. Um.
Maybe your retention data.
Yeah.
You know?
I mean, Katie, you give us a lot of that, which is good. I, I don't want to get that specific, but those are the key things people look at, our key demographics, you know? How's the enrollment going, up or down, open enrolled seats, what goes to vouchers?
I know I've heard a lot of talk about testing because prior to COVID, we were higher out of the three schools in like the report card stuff. And then can COVID, we kind of dropped some. And there is, right around COVID time, there was a big to do with a lot of parents about why, you know, do we have the reading levels that we do at just the basic proficiencies and.
I blame cell phones, but that's a different conversation.
Oh, that is a totally different conversation, but.
All the C K Ls.
Yeah. Yeah, that, we'll have new testing. Okay, so do we want to pick a date when we're going to get together? Is it too soon or we're jumping off quick? I think you guys are ambitious. I love it.
One of our meetings, they just, the next few are really weird though because we are meeting on the staff in service day. Then we meet the Monday of Thanksgiving week and then we meet the Monday before Christmas vacation, so.
Right.
I think this meeting, as a board and a work meeting, needs to be the first step before we.
Correct.
Bring in.
Yeah, but usually we try and like do it before. Can we start at five? Can we do the meeting and then stay late?
I agree, after.
Do you want after, after me?
Be better.
Then I would, I would say we have a hard stop at two hours. So we're not here forever. I don't mean it that way. I don't want to sound like we're dead, but.
Yeah, I would agree.
Too late and people's brains turn off.
Just stick to the agenda and not.
Absolutely.
Keep the first meeting rolling.
Yep.
Why don't we do the twenty seven?
At five?
No, they're saying.
Oh, that's right, we're saying later. Sorry, I'm sorry.
If you stick to your, stick to the agenda, keep the meeting rolling.
Are we allowed to put a public notice that the work session will start immediately following the six P M. meeting? So we don't have to wait till seven o'clock?
Yep.
Okay. Because I would like, yeah, if we can word it like that.
Yep.
There's a chance I won't be here, but I'll let you know closer to the date.
Nice. We're locking that in twenty seven?
Yep.
I am very pleased. I did not come in expecting that. You guys rock and are really, really impressing me.
We're awesome like that.
You are. I, I thought it would be, well, I want to think about it. You guys are incredible. It's great.
Oh, there's a lot of thinking to be had, kind of. We're good.
Well, you know, and there might be more thinking and changing our minds as we get to it. It's, but let's go for it.
So we're going to go so right after the board meeting that day for two hours?
Okay.
Max.
Correct. Yeah, there's a hard stop. Yep.
Frank Snacks.
Yep.
Board members, if you think of specific data that you want pulled prior to that, just let me know and I will make sure to. You know, I'll put it in a Google folder and share the whole folder out with everyone, so.
All right. Any other questions? Any other things? Okay, moving on. Administration reports. Superintendent and business manager report.
Uh, so key takeaways for tonight is Amber will go through update on the district finances for the month, uh, referendum finances, an update on where we're at with the twenty five, twenty six budget. I'll jump into kind of how the start of the school year has gone and then we'll follow up with just the hot off the press today, the surplus auctions. Amber, go ahead.
So still, we're very fresh into the fiscal year, not a lot going on in August. Um, our target for revenues and expenditures would be at or below sixteen point six seven percent for expenditures and at or above the revenue. We did receive our property tax settlement from the county in August that gets booked into the prior fiscal year because it was last year's tax dollars. That's just the final payment of everything that came in. Interest earnings for some of the revenues we received and we also start to see some of the student and childcare fees coming in and wellness, wellness spending fees. Expenses in August are pretty minimal. We had some summer maintenance projects, but they were very light. The maintenance crews were very busy with the referendum work, so no major, major things got done this year. Um, up here at the high school, down at the elementary, they did do the gymnasium floor, was resanded and refinished. And then sixteen or seventeen classrooms also got resanded and refinished. That was outside of the referendum work. And we also paid our annual license for discovery education and the year round staff leadership benefits and then the summer school wages were paid out. For operating funds, other funds, our debt payments have not gone out yet in August. Um, they did, we did make a payment goal for September, so we'll probably see that in your list. I just wanted to kind of give you guys a little bit of a history on the debt levy because that's the amount that gets added on to the taxes to cover the debt that the holders pulled in. So three years ago, we were at eight hundred and two thousand. Two years ago, or last year, we were at seven hundred and sixty thousand. This upcoming year, we will be at seventy sixty three. So we're trying to keep that as stable as possible. And then our referendum projects need to be completed within three years of debt issuance. We issued our debt on seven eleven of twenty twenty four. So we need to make everything spent by seven eleven of twenty twenty seven. I don't think that's going to be a problem. Referendum finance update. We had zero expenses in August. Um, Bayland got us their last P update right at the end of August, so we got eight in September. We've had a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in interest earnings come in in August. That is due in large part to five CDs that matured and all five of those CDs paid out at maturity rather than month by month. So we've got to kind of go next of seasons that pay interest monthly and then some that pay out matured. The nice healthy earnings month. So looking forward to, I did not change the better twenty five, twenty six budget. This is a hard time of year for me because I'm living in three budget years, so that's, that's taking some meetings soon. Um, since we adopted our preliminary budget in June, we have updated our staff and related expenditures. The personal property aid payment, this is a change that happened last year. The state said we are no longer going to allow taxing jurisdictions to tax personal property. So do you think about a business like the local grocery store, they have shelving in their business, that's into their personal property, they used to have to be taxed on that. They no longer have to. So the state said, okay, because we're taking that tax benefit away from you, whatever you got for personal property, we're going to give to you as an aid payment. Our amount that we got from personal property was just shy of thirty four thousand dollars. That was extra money that we got last year. This year, the states that votes are bad. That needs to be under your revenue limit. You can't have an extra thirty four thousand. So we are going into this new year with the loss of thirty four thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, we know that is reasonable where we're at with this thing, so we're working at it. Um, we did adjust our open and home and estimates to reflect the new speed rates that came in and that goes for both in and out. We finalized the estimates with upon thirty nine debt levy. And we also looked through and finalized our grant here bill remotes for the title brands, the I D A, those defense. We do have a little bit of carry around some of those.
Did we hit third Friday yet?
We did, just.
And how did we do?
Don't have numbers yet. I'll talk about that.
Okay.
So things that we still need to finalize our budget before the October twenty seventh meeting. We need the revenue limit worksheet. That will not come out from the state until October fifteenth. So we can do some estimating. We can kind of play with the numbers, but we won't know what that final number is. So I'll have to do it October, so that'll be before we. Um, we also need to do a final review of finance committee prior to the public hearing and we have that meeting scheduled for October seventh. So my finance committee numbers, make sure it's on your calendar. We will be having the public hearing on October seven, twenty seven. That is the same night as your regular board meeting. The budget adoption will take place at that same meeting. We don't want anyone to panic to think that their opinions won't be heard. If you come and talk about some things that are important to you in that public hearing, the board can then make changes to our budget before you actually adopt it based on the comments that are heard in the public hearing. So it's not a stop all, end all, whatever's before you can't be changed, it can be changed, right?
Amber, can I just add on to that? Um, in years past, we've always done that at the hour.
Correct.
So that's going to be five to six then on October twenty seven.
I was just looking that up because I was like, oh, I think we want to.
So maybe we should, no, maybe we shouldn't, we should change our work session.
Well, does it, I mean, it doesn't have to be on a meeting day, right? We can do it at five o'clock, six o'clock.
That'll be an awfully long day.
Right, if we did it on the meeting day. I don't say, what if we scheduled it?
Usually the budget hearing is about forty five minutes.
Right.
So, and that's more of just, we present the information, which is, it's already going through the finance committee, so.
What do you feel?
I think it'd be fine.
Okay, awesome.
Easy to do it all one night.
Okay.
To then to try and find out. So five o'clock or six o'clock and a seven o'clock.
Again. Super jazzed with the hearing this. Awesome. I'm sorry, Amber, I missed what you said.
So we'll make sure we feed you that.
All right, put that in there. Excellent.
That's all I had for budget.
Just want to give an update too, because I was at the state conference last week and we had a federal speaker, someone who works closely with the federal government on education. And October first is going to be a really telling date for releasing of federal funds. Um, relates to the staff program as well as many of the title programs. Um, there is some talk that they may not release all the funds right away. So, um, that will have an impact on what our budget could look like as well. So, but we all want that to October first. Do you have more?
No.
Oh, I just didn't go forward. I'm sorry. All right, um, start of the school year. Can't believe it. We are in week four already of the school year. It's hard to believe. Um, we, it's going very slowly, I have to say. The first couple of weeks, we offered a lot of support for our students in four K as well as the, the staff members in there, um, our admin team. We had a Google signup sheet that was going around that we all kind of put our names on when we were free helping in music, art. I had, um, recess, lunchroom, wherever possible, so, um, I would say our four K kids have come a long way in where they were on the first day. It's amazing how quickly they pick up on routines and just know what they need to be doing throughout the day. So I think if you talk to any of the classroom teachers, they would say that they're working really hard on creating those structures right now in their classrooms, um, making sure that the kids know what the expectations are, so. Our four bus routes are running very smoothly. Um, we have not had a kid not get up at their bus stop, so that is positive. First couple of weeks, I was riding the city route, helping out, uh, making sure many of our four K, it seems like our city route has a lot of four K students on that route and making sure that they got off at the right stops, so. Uh, we had our first mentor, mentee, um, meeting this today, actually, right after school, quarter one. So we have three new professional staff members hired this year, new elementary art teacher, new school psychologist and the new special education teacher at the elementary. So they're doing some great things. I feel like we hired some really amazing staff members this year, so. Third Friday count was last Friday, September nineteenth. Um, I'll be working with Shelley and Susan tomorrow, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I'm trying to pull the reports together that need to be submitted by the twenty sixth. Um, I'll share our final numbers with the board then in October, so.
Oh, man, you know, you have an inkling. Are we hitting the mark? We blow mark, above mark?
It's not October yet.
But no, it's third Friday. You, we would know.
Did you read?
But no, we would know. I, I taught for thirty two years. We knew that Friday if we hit our numbers.
I feel like we have a lot of new students in this year that have transferred.
So that's good.
Yeah. I know Shelley's the one that enters them, so, you know.
This is still happening.
It's still happening, yeah.
So it sounds like it's potentially good.
I can tell you, we had fourteen students receiving special education support transfer into the district though. That is the highest we have ever seen. I think last year we had four. So when you think of fourteen additional students in special ed, that's almost a full case load.
Absolutely.
With another almost teacher.
Yes, it is.
Obviously, that's spread four K through twelfth grade, but a lot of students.
What were the reasons for transferring to our district? Were you just not satisfied with where they were or?
A lot of different things. A lot of different things, opportunities, unhappy with where they were at, yeah.
Family moving into the town. All right, any other questions?
Um, we had some unexpected fire drills. One today, um, our painters.
Good training.
Were doing some sanding and set off the fire alarm right in the middle, was it lunch?
It was, well, it was recess for the older kids.
Indoor recess, so it was drizzling a little bit when the kids had to go outside, but.
All you have to do is send out an email and say, we're having our first fire drill on Thursday, and then about ten minutes later, fire, fire.
Cancer the drill, well.
Pull the fire alarm already this year, that was an experience. Yeah, so, these kids, they know what to do now, so no worries. Picture day was last week, I think it was last week, right? Two weeks ago, right? Two weeks?
Last week.
So. Um, well, picture retake coming up in October. We did do suicide prevention training on September ninth. Thank you to Sheriff Josky for coming in. We had fourteen community members, families, coaches come and be part of that, so that was a great turnout. Homecoming preparations are underway, as you've heard Kara speak about. That's coming up in October, beginning of October. Our fall sports, volleyball, football, soccer, cross country are well underway. Seems like fall sports are really busy right now. Got teams going, playing every night right now. Student clubs are underway, we are hope squad, bowling, fishing, D I signup is going around right now, and then our art club is starting up. Lasted, we had some educator effectiveness training for administrators, so we are all now recertified to evaluate teachers. And then I also just want to touch on this, because this is really important, is our mental health services. We have added an additional option this year for our students, thanks to the Northeast Wisconsin Community Clinic. They had reached out to us last year wanting to partner with us, so they're going to be offering two full days where they will bring a counselor onsite to work with students. One day at the elementary school, one day here at middle school and high school. That's in addition to our one day that we get a week from Bellin, and our one day a week we get from Door County Medical Center, as well as our Pack of Pups child play-based therapy that we do half a day once a week. So, I don't know of a district our size that offers this many resources for students relating to mental health, so this is definitely a huge, huge need for our students, and the service that we will continue to offer as long as we can. I just want to mention that we have a couple of open positions for anyone out in the public that would be watching. We have a full-time speech and language pathologist that we're looking to fill still. We have our middle school, high school Spanish teaching position open, full-time paraprofessional for their charter school, ABA, middle school, high school cook, and we are also looking for childcare teachers and assistants, both at Pack of Pups, as well as the elementary school, so. Then I'll talk a little bit about our surplus auction, this just went live this afternoon. We have thirty-three items up for bid. You all have a flyer that Amber graciously put together for us with the QR code, so you can scan it and access it. We'll also put this up around, on our website, on social media pages, maybe hopefully around the community, if people will let us post it, but it will be live for two weeks, is that correct, Amber? Many of the items are items that we had in our tech ed center that we're looking to replace with some newer, up-to-date equipment in relation to the referendum. Some of it was equipment that we had for facilities, buildings and grounds, so thirty-three items total. Here's some pictures of some items.
Thirteen days, seventeen hours, four minutes and fourteen seconds.
And this is the first time we've used Wisconsin surplus for anything like this. Amber worked really hard with many people to get this up and running, so I think the turnout will be hopefully much more than what we've had in the years past for auction items, so.
I do want to give a shout out to Justin, he took a lot of this equipment, cleaned it up, brought it up to the bright sunshine, he gave good pictures for us.
Oh, really?
He just got it up on our website already this afternoon, so.
Nice.
And our, our recent bids.
Are there really?
Oh, really?
Yeah, I kind of threw this before the meeting, and it's a little bit out there, really.
Which is, it's a great news.
Good.
Do you have a, a goal in mind?
No.
No?
Well, me, I go on, I go on there right away if I want to. I'm going to pay, it's a thousand dollars they put in the bid. Doesn't mean you're going to be that, that bid, but.
Right.
That can be your limit.
I would say one of the biggest items we have is the C and C machine, so that is out there as well.
I guess a question that I have, is this all our stuff, or is this some of the stuff that was donated from businesses? Are we, do we check on?
All our stuff.
Did we check, double check with some of these businesses?
Yes, we did.
Okay, because in prior, we had that happen, so.
That is correct.
Just so we don't go down that rabbit hole again. Okay. Because we still have time to stop at the auction, because we're not going with this before it's gone, so.
Okay, next up then is the administrative report by the city.
All right, so my update is very heavy on the academics and data, so stop me from sharing too much, or if you have questions. First, I wanted to share out with you our view of the year and the data, so it goes with A G R, and share a little bit about our goals for this school year. I passed out this sheet right before meeting, and on the sheet in the blue is listed all of our data for the fall for this school year. For each of the subject areas, reading and math, if you remember from last year, we adjusted our goals completely, so that they would align with the language used, Ben State, with Act Twenty. So, what we're looking at is, we set a goal for both reading and math, that less than twenty-five percent of each grade level would fall below the twenty-fifth percentile of reading and math. And reading, if a student falls below the twenty-fifth percentile, that means that they, they receive a reading plan and receive extra support. In math, there isn't any requirements, but we are just using that same benchmark of the twenty-fifth percentile to keep it consistent, so we can kind of compare, and even compare with grade levels outside of third grade, so fourth and sixth. If you take a look at reading, you can see that we're doing pretty well, so kindergarten, we have four students with reading plans. In first grade, we have five students, second grade, we have ten, and in third grade, thirteen students. New this year, I tot, I totaled them up, because I think that's kind of important to look at holistically as well. So, if you look at all of our kindergarten through third grade students, we have thirty-two out of one hundred and forty students that are looking to begin a reading plan, and that includes students receiving special education as well, so if a student receives special education, that doesn't exempt them from having a reading plan if they still fall below the twenty-fifth percentile. So, that's a positive there. Math, if we take a look at the number of students that fall below the twenty-fifth percentile, kindergarten, there are two at this point, in first grade, there are ten, in second grade, there are twelve, and then in third grade, there are eleven. If you total that all together, of one hundred and forty students, there are thirty-five students that are below the twenty-fifth percentile in math. We started our interventions, so what we do is, any student that falls below the twenty-fifth percentile, they're automatically identified for an intervention, so they work with a reading specialist, they work with a reading teacher, they work in a small group with a classroom teacher during intervention time, or they work with their special education teacher, depending on how that's written in their I E P. We also take a look at the students that fall below the twenty, that fall within the twenty-fifth to the thirty-fifth percentile, because we don't necessarily believe that, we just want to cut it off at twenty-five and just hope that students kind of ride that gray area. We're also placing students in interventions that fall within the twenty-fifth to the thirty-fifth percentile in both reading and math. That does mean that there are some students who are receiving both reading and math interventions, so we've had to creatively schedule that. There are some students that are just receiving one or the other, there are students that the requirements of their reading plan are met, just through their special education services, because they're already receiving additional support for special education in reading and math.
How many are in that twenty-five to thirty percent, thirty-five percent?
How many?
Total students? Are you servicing?
For interventions?
Correct.
Oh, I actually did, okay, I can put that on, hold on a second. So, we have. But in kindergarten, we have a total of sixteen students receiving math or reading. In first grade, we have a total of twenty-six students receiving math or reading. Second grade, we have twenty-six students receiving math or reading, and then third grade, we have forty students receiving math or reading. So, you can see that that's very different than the numbers of students below the twenty-fifth percentile.
But it's still a good, it's still a good chunk of what we're trying to move the needle on. I, I understand the whole less than twenty-five, but I've always thought that those in the middle gray area are the ones you really want to move, because it's a little easier to nudge them forward than to really catch up from the back end, so I'm glad that you guys are doing that.
And so that they don't slide behind.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We do see that sometimes, we're seeing they're going through progress, and then they kind of like plateau a little bit, but.
Right.
The rigor is kind of increasing, so they're not necessarily matching that increase, so we've got a really close eye on it this year.
Just great.
So, I see the math seems to be pretty stable at the thirty percent for first, second and third. Is there any thing that's been identified for why reading is getting, like each one is getting a higher percentage?
Well, I mean, the biggest thing that I keep looking back to is, we made some significant changes last year, and I just think big changes take time to really see the impact on it, so we started looking at the data difference last year. Last year was the first year that we did reading plans. This year is the first year of reading curriculum, you know, so I really like to look at kindergarten and first grade, and like those will be really good markers moving forward to see, based on our changes, what has worked, what hasn't worked. So, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, and then I think just the intentional way that we are giving interventions, and making sure that we're getting them covered, so.
So, from a, from like first grade, second grade, third grade, do you find it's the same students each year that are moving into those reading or math plans in the next year? Or are they completely different students?
I would say it's bold. I think we have a handful of students that kind of find themselves in that gray area where they do kind of ebb and flow in and out, especially like second and third grade coming into the fall after the summer. There are students that do, they don't, they don't keep up with the reading, they're busy during the summer, all the things that normally happen. So, a lot of those kids will kind of ebb and flow in and out, but then you have your group that are kind of consistent, and then that's where we have the conversation as the school team, like is this a student that we, you know, need? Not just an intervention, we do need like intensive, you know, showing, and then if that is still not necessarily showing progress, is that a discussion that we have with all the special education programs, so it's bold.
So, I don't know, maybe not everybody might know what we got, test results via email, NextPath, instead of getting a printout, coming home with your kiddo. So, is there a way to tell if the parent has logged in and looked at it, or do you think you're losing people?
We can see which parents have claimed students, and they're on their bills, so, yeah.
I guess, is there a different way that parents can get them, other than? Digital? I guess there was one message or kind of a few complaints that not downloading another app and getting them that way, so. I guess, through the other app probably wasn't the best way, maybe reach out to the school to find that out, or one of the teachers, but if that's a way, I kind of figured getting printed and picked up.
Oh, for sure, and we have printed them, and we, in the past, have shared them at parent teacher conferences. The hope of sending it digitally was to make it easier and also for parents to access it sooner. Yeah, because we sent it out, I would say within a week of after the students did the assessment, so instead of waiting until November.
That's great.
Wanted to get that.
That's immediate data.
We could still print it too, in addition to that.
Again, it's new.
Yeah.
It's brand new this year, so there's going to be a little, few kinks, so.
It is a valid point, though, because I have personally helped two or three different parents get Power Schools, so they can do the registration, and because they're like, we used to always get a packet of papers, it was so much easier. I have it here and I do it.
It's only if the kid brought the papers home.
Yeah, I mean, there's pros and cons to everything, but.
But.
Change is hard, but it's necessary.
It's easier when it's on the computer and it's done, because half of it's implemented too, so.
Oh, I love it.
Is that correct, Shelley?
Yes, when I was a paper, giving one, I want to take it out to.
Half of it's probably trying to be able to read it.
I believe it, I'm just saying that I'm noticing there are a number of people that just resist technology, and it's trying to bring them forward.
Oh, it has to, because there's, their children are getting it, so we have to, the kids, yeah, it's a divide, a digital divide.
I will say too, is one of the nice things about what NextPath offers, which we're talking about here, that's the program, is with Act Twenty, one of the requirements is parents, any students that have a reading plan, a parent has to acknowledge that plan within ten days that they've received it, so NextPath automatically collects that information, saying a parent muted, walked in, muted, and that's it, so it's easy for us as a district to collect that information, present it.
So, one more question, how long have we been tracking this data, like the reading and math?
So, we track reading and math data every year, but the way that we have been tracking it changed significantly last year, because of Act Twenty.
We still have that, because I'm.
We have data.
Yeah, I would, I think I had that to our data collection for the reading and math.
The reports are going to be a little skewed, because they're two different avenues of how it's collected, so we just have to be mindful of that when you look at that data. Act Twenty changed that, so.
Well, you know, just the last two years of information.
Just be aware, the cut scores are a little.
I know we got them, but I don't remember all that we read.
The cut scores are different this year.
So, it will look like the student is failing when last year they weren't, and it's just, it's a different, it's, it's hard. So, we really won't see anything for the next.
Do you not think it's, I mean, if it's not relevant, then I won't, don't bother.
It's only apples to apples, barely last year and this year, because as a parent, I'm just like, okay.
Yeah, because you have nothing, it's, it's a whole new thing now.
It's a brand new, yeah, I didn't mean to poo-poo it, it's just.
No, no, that's fine, it's a baseline, though.
Yeah, it's a great baseline, it's a good, it's good that we're all starting with it. All right, what else you got?
And then thinking back, even off of that, I just wanted to share some literacy curriculum updates in the elementary school and middle school. So, we've officially kicked off and implemented the E L A curriculum, so that spans four K through eighth grade. It's been going really, really well. Feedback from teachers has been overwhelmingly positive. The biggest thing right now for teachers is just the newness of the life. I haven't personally gotten any feedback on anything that has not necessarily gone well, or anything that they don't like, or something that the curriculum is missing. It's all been pretty positive across the board. One specific comment that keeps coming up at different grade levels is, they are, the teachers are happy with how much writing is included, so students are writing every single day, which is not necessarily what we had done in the past. In the past, our writing was very much the traditional, you know, you have your narrative unit, you have your storytelling unit, you have your nonfiction unit, you're researching it, and you're like slowly building on it little by little, where they have students writing every single day, even if they're responding to text in a couple of sentences and pulling evidence from the short text. So. So one of the sixth grade teachers made a comment and said that over the course of like two weeks, it's night and day what the students are able to write.
Is it cross-curricular, or is it just reading, English focused?
It's cross-curricular.
So how are the other, I don't want to use the word nasir, but those that might have been reluctant to do it, how are they feeling with it now?
Good, for the most part. It integrates all different topics, so I know four K, they were studying like the human body. Sixth grade, then on the opposite end of the spectrum, they were studying Roald Dahl, the author, and reading his memoir. So the content is all over the place in terms of spanning science, social studies, then elements of ELA and things like that too. So it's very comprehensive. The other thing that's been really cool to see is how it connects from grade level to grade level. And I was surprised to see, so the K-five curriculum, my four K, K-five curriculum is called CKLA. Six-eight uses AMRA ELA, so it's just a slightly different curriculum, but it's the same. But fifth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade, just in conversations with the teachers and then observing in the seventh grade class that they observed. They all were very similar in what the structure was, so like sixth grade is teaching the memoir of Roald Dahl. Seventh grade is looking at the stories and talking about the characters. So there's quite a bit of overlap between the levels, which is really nice to see.
Are they reading James and the Giant Peach?
I don't know what's going on.
So how are you going to celebrate success? What are you going to do? You have to do that.
So we have, well, a couple other things to share.
Okay.
So we're working with Charlotte Meyer from CISA seven. She is coming in, actually Wednesday this week, to do walkthroughs, and then we're going to pull stuff together on the state during PLCs and just highlight some of the monthings. I think it's really fun to see what different grade levels are doing and how they're pulling everything together. So we're going to do like a showcase of sorts, and then, you know, obviously we can use that in other conversations for like coaching and just kind of helping teachers get the resources and things that they need. So that's sort of really great to see. And I think sharing some of the data, just in terms of, as we go through the school year, keeping track of the students and how many students are on reading plans, how many are reading, seeing their children, and just kind of watching that membership throughout the year, I think will be motivating as well.
Is there an opportunity for teachers to go into other teachers' classrooms and see how it's going, and maybe seeing how it relates to what they're doing, or are you not there yet?
We're not quite there.
Okay, never mind.
They do a lot of, they do a lot of that as a team, so grade levels, you know, I don't know that they necessarily have done like formal observations, but they spend a lot of time talking about what's working, what's not working, and trying new things that way.
I know it's new, but I would anticipate that with the extra writing that the students are doing at each grade level, it's going to reflect in their reading performance as they progress through elementary school.
I know my daughter's in eighth grade, and we're in open house. Ms. Weber showed us some of the materials, and Lily was stoked because some of it is like a graphic novel, and like it's going to catch maybe some children that don't like to read a traditional book, but would read a graphic novel in a heartbeat, so.
And the other, the other thing that the curriculum does really well is, instead of just doing like novel unit after novel unit, after novel unit, there's a couple novels that the students will read in depth, but a lot of it is shorter excerpts of text, where they, you know, read it as a whole, and then they read it again, and this time they're looking for how characters do, can be getting to act. And then they read it again to look at theme, and then they read it again, so they're really working on those literary components. Because I do think for some students, that whole novel, like, you know, answer, read the, read the chapter, answer the questions, read the chapter, answer the questions. That's not necessarily working for us anymore, so it's just a new way of having kids look at text.
It's going to change the whole assessment process.
We've been getting a fable a day, almost, coming home in the take-home folder, then, you know, ask about the theme, ask about how they were feeling.
I know I wasn't big on a lot of the drier, you know, classic novels, but my grandmother had gotten me one. It was a whole set of Kindergarten Books that were basically Man in the Iron Mask, all of those as graphic novels. And it interested me enough to want to read the original pieces. And I think that might, you know, that graphic novel part of it might entice some of those children a little bit more.
Kids' needs are changing, and that's why the educators are the ones in the forefront, they know. What we did is not the same as what they've got, and how it's going to progress the next ten years is amazing. Anyone else have questions for Katie?
Nice work.
Yes.
I just want to say thank you to our staff that have been undergoing all this. This has been a huge undertaking for them, and thank you to Katie and Danielle, our reading interventionists. Their leadership has been amazing, trying to get this up and running, so.
I talked about reading, that's all right, so.
Agreed. I, thank you for all the hard work. Please let them know, we are appreciative of what they're doing, and we're looking to see wonderful outcomes from them. That's why I wanted to share that success. Like you've got to celebrate the success and the hard work that goes into it, because change is hard. And it's a brand new curriculum, and you're worried about doing something wrong. All right, moving on to new business. Recommend, I would entertain a motion to approve the 2025-26 Academic and Career Planning, ACP, and Education for Employment E4E Plan.
Show move.
Second.
Moved by Lonnie, seconded by Chris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, I would accept a motion to approve the contract with Zach Pate for the Huddle Program.
Show move.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Mike to approve the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, and the last one is I would accept a motion to approve the contract with Jamie Spitzer.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Chrissy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, are there any, if there's any future agenda items, get them to me or Jessie or Shelley, so we can get them on the agenda. The future meeting's coming up. Finance Committee will meet at five o'clock on Tuesday, October seventh, in the District Office Conference Room, and that is me, Chrissy, and Jeremy. And the next regular board meeting is at six PM. A work session to follow the meeting, and the budget hearing will be at five o'clock PM on that Monday, October twenty-second. Correct?
Correct.
Got it all? So we had a long day next, next month, but we're going to do it. All right, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Show move.
Second.
All right, moved by Jeremy, seconded by Chrissy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Meeting is adjourned.